You've got mail.
I'm very creative, but it's there.
I have one o'clock, so we'll get started. So I'll let you just go ahead, Roy. You can talk about the revenues now we now know what the income taxes are going to be and take it from there.
For the members, you had a pack that I gave you, so we'll basically work through that front sheet. Okay, so Ed, right, at this point with the growth quotient in place, 4.2%, the property tax revenue should go up approximately $195,000. Excise tax revenue is expected to increase by about $27,000. Financial institutions tax, 600,000. C-VET, 1,734. Certified shares, this is the first of the income tax numbers and the largest of them. Projected or actually now certified number is $1,952,939. That's an increase of $132,134 over last year. Economic development, income tax, an increase of $57,545. Public safety, which is a third of the income tax rates, is an increase of $42,319. The levy freeze number will remain constant since the levies are vaulted at $1,127,391. Motor vehicle highway revenue, $2,416,042. That's a decrease of $414,311. Local road and street, $202,283. That's a decrease of $6,865. Q and Bridge, based upon the CNAV, will see a decline of $946 and CCD of $948. The tax caps will increase by $4,192 approximately for $22,360 in lost revenue due to the property tax caps. The CNAV is $805,198,976. That's a decrease of just over $3 million in assessed value across the county. Any questions on revenues? The net revenue increase across all of that is $33,999. So all of those increases basically accounted for the loss of highway funding dollars in the 2021 budget. The levies, as I have them plugged in at this point. Reassessment, $170,000. Health, $10,000. Parking wreck, $25,000. I've already talked about Q and Bridge, but that should be around $283,399. It's a bit of an estimate, but it should be very close. Sorry, that's not the right number. $264,910 for Q and Bridge, $265,716 for CCD. I expect that the general fund will then be approved at somewhere around $2,677,479. We will adopt that to 3.2 million and that will then be cut down to whatever the max is. Debt, we will adopt, tend to adopt at $320,000 and that will be cut down to allow for the maximum reserve in the debt service fund and can do that calculation, but I'll let them do it for us. Every fund at this point, we haven't finished this, but at this point has a reserve in. That's the revenue rundown at this point. Anything else to add on revenues yet? We've got good information, we've got good news.
So you're figuring that the actual property tax rate will be 46 cents?
That's high because I still have a debt number in there at 320,000. That will come in probably somewhere closer to 200. So you would shave a penny, so 45, 46 cents.
And we're 44 now, basically?
Yes.
So we're talking about a penny more, a penny?
Yeah, I think around 45, probably catch it 45 and a half.
Okay.
Can I have a copy of that for me?
Yeah, when we're done here.
Okay, so, well, what I would suggest is, is that we'll just run through some of those questions that we did not answer as far as raises, the part-time issue. We have a whole list of stuff, the EMS and all of that. We'll just go through that and we can discuss that if anybody has issues with that or wants to make changes. Why now will be the time?
Yeah, I wanted to get what I wrote up. Okay, so basically we have the salary questions. So I'll put proposal out there and then we can discuss it. And I'll start with the raises. And I proposed and I plugged in into my model at this point, an increase of $750 for all four full-time employees, $375 for a full-time salary. Now that encompasses three people because we're going to deal with the part-time situation separately. That's three positions. That would be my thing, is what I have in here, is the veteran's service officer, the coroner, and the surveyor.
No raises for the commissioners or council?
Well, I have that down here. We can talk through that, too.
Okay.
I have, if you want to put it in there with it, I have $315 plugged in as a placeholder at this point.
Well, if you want to do that, if they want to do that, that's fine. Go ahead.
That's a question. Where we stand on that?
I'd say just leave it, no raises. And we got one last, if I recall, did we get a lot of raises last year? Think we did.
I believe you're right.
We generally don't raise them every year.
No, we generally don't. That's why I just plug the news placeholder at this point.
Well, we'll just say no raise for the commissioners or council. So is everybody fine with the $750? I mean, are you supportive of that or do you want to do something else? I mean, I think we can afford it, you know, this year. The times may yet hit us as we go in another budget year, but.
What percentage?
You might have to ask Roy what the percentage is. Of course, it depends on how much you make.
Exactly.
Obviously, the more, the higher you make, the smaller the percentage.
That's not a huge amount, but we appreciate everything they do, so we'll do what we can.
Oh, 2.15 on the average. Kind of just hunting and pecking to get the number exactly, 2.1. I guess within $500 of being equal across there. So around 2.1% on the average salary.
Okay.
So are we good on that?
Are we good on that? Or you want to go through them all and then come back? But let's move on to part-time then.
I propose the following for part-time. Set the rate for the regular part-time positions at 1250 an hour. That would encompass four positions, the extension secretary to the clerk deputy position, the health clerk registrar, and the probation secretary. And we propose $12 for all other part-time work exclusive of the EMS part-time rate. So those would be plugged in positions, officers are out on conference and so on. My argument here, my reasoning for this is that the positions that we have deemed to be regular part-time have a schedule and have an expectation, or a higher expectation of having involvement in the office or in that role where the others are more truly, what I would term a truly part-time position. So that's my proposal to put in front of you for the part-time rates. So there you are. The $12 number, I, on all the lines that have, that submitted their request for it, I took the rate that we had, which was $10, divided it by the dollars that had been appropriated to come up with a number of hours per year and then multiplied that out by this rate. And that can be changed if we desire to, but that's where we would then approve their request in that one.
So like the employees at the park, which are seasonal, they would be 12 then, is that correct?
It's my proposal.
Got no problem with it all.
And I think we ought to add, I mean, the probation secretary apparently works the standard hours every week. I mean, that's one that has never been added.
That's what I didn't include.
I guess, and I would say that that's fair.
They will all be set at the same rate and we'll then move from there. Generally how we've handled these is that those positions have been given half of the full-time salary, or full-time employees' increase. All of these during this hourly rate change will get more than that. So they're not getting the 375 tacked on on top of that. From there forward, we can handle these positions the way we've handled them in the past because they were all paid differently. So they'll all be set at the same number.
Can I ask a question? Does veterans office secretary, will she be at the $12 rate then?
Okay, let's move on.
EMS, you adjust the part-time rates and you get to deal with EMS rates. And I propose to increasing them by $2 an hour. These are the part-time, so these are people who are not full-time employees for our ambulance service. They work for someone else, some other service. Maybe they're a firefighter, maybe they work a regular job, but they're trained EMTs and they work part-time for our service. So I propose raising those rates by $2 an hour to correspond with the other part-time number that I, we just talked about. Those rates are, those vary based upon the level of certification. So currently, a base EMT, part-time rate number is 1285 an hour. An advanced EMT is 1385 and a paramedic is 1585. The special event rate is a little bit higher because those are shorter, shorter times and you go and you do it annually. Those are, so you have a special event rate for an EMT, part-time, 1435, advanced at 1535, and special event at 1735. So those would be the numbers I would propose for those levels of part-time for the EMS person. Those are $2 increases over what's currently there. To tie in with the EMS, our own employees have a special event rate, so then they come in, are scheduled, regularly scheduled, folks do not work the football games and whatever special fare if they request an ambulance or tractor pull or demolition derby. Our people on duty are not the ones working that. Somebody else comes in and works it. They get paid a special event rate. I propose, since those people are our full-time current county employees, that they, that we increase those numbers by 250 an hour. Those current rates, or excuse, yes, our current rates are, apparently it's 1260, 1360, and 1560 for the three levels. So that would go to 1510, 1610, and 1810. And finally, the EMS service for our regular employees has a pay floor based upon their diminishing hourly rate on overtime. As you, as you know, our EMS employees are salaried, but the way the wages and labor law works is that for the number of hours they work, you know, they, they work, let's say, 72 hours in a week. They're paid a salary on, on what would be 40 hours and the additional 32 are overtime. But the hourly rate diminishes over, because that salaried number is applied over all 72 hours for a dollar per hour. And then that hourly rate, the more hours you put on, goes down. And we set, two years ago, when that was all, when Julie went through all that and ran and got it approved through us and the commissioners, set a floor of $11 an hour, a dollar higher than the part-time rate. That's why it was set there, is that they should not get down any lower than that. And they don't very often, but occasionally it does happen. I propose to raise the floor $2.50 an hour just because, just for the same reason as the way it was set. It was set a dollar above and it'll still be a dollar above. So there's my EMS proposal for salaries.
Okay, let's move on.
Uh, let's see. Jailers, jail supervisors, jail commander, jail maintenance. I propose that we set the jailer's salaries at $33,000 per year, the supervisors at $33.5, the commander at $34.5, and the jail maintenance position to be set at $31.1, which matches the courthouse custodian position. At this point, it's paid slightly less than that and I propose that we make it match that position there. Questions about that?
So as far as the jailer's salaries, that is what the sheriff requested, is that correct?
That is what the sheriff requested. Supervisors is what the sheriff requested. The commander is $500 less than what the sheriff requested. That has been a tremendously high turnover position. The prison has paid a much higher, has increased that payout there significantly to where we're now training for them versus at least holding serve with them. I think that's a good position or a good plan myself. I propose that we institute the deputy stipend plan for the resolution. We did discuss the last hearing. That's a total cost of up to $23,000. And the last piece I have here is, is that I propose that we pay down $10,000 or of the highway superintendent's comp cost back as we had last year.
So as far as the reserves, and we talked about this quite a bit at length the last time, is the highways reserve. We're eating substantially into their reserve now. I assume that we're hoping then that there will be a recovery in gas tax collections and that they will recover.
The highways reserve at this point is going to be somewhere in, on the order of about $354,000 on a 2.3, $4 million budget. Last year, we adopted at somewhere around a million dollar reserve. So you can see the effect of the reduction in the gas tax revenue in particular in that. That's the lion's share of that is the volume revenue. We did, as we discussed at budget hearings, moving $250,000 from their repair parts line, that singular line, over to CDIT via an additional appropriation in January. That would then have their funding out of CDIT increased by that quarter million dollars to $650,000 out of the CDIT fund versus what has been typical last few years, which is $400,000. That maintains sideways funding for bituminous expenses, basically everything that they asked for, which was nearly all sideways. There were some reductions that were requested in there, but we basically passed that thing through. I know from my seat, I don't want to cut funding for the road yet. I just don't want to do that. If we, if the gas tax funding doesn't come back though, next year is not, they're not a big choice. At this point, we can do it long. And I believe that gas tax revenue, the MBAH revenue, will come back next year. Whether it'll come back to where it was, I can't answer.
Well, I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, we can't, I mean, people don't realize what all we're doing as far as using our own dollars to try to work on these roads. I mean, we're not just relying on gas tax revenue to, to fix them. If we were, why? It would be just that much worse.
Yeah, basically, if we didn't, if we didn't do that, if we relied on the gas tax revenue, there would be $0 to paving and there would be almost no gravel purchases. That's where you would be.
And I don't think any of us want that.
I don't think any of us want that. And so I'm good with it. I don't like adopting it that low. It will be better because they will not spend every dollar in every appropriation, just like nobody else does.
Right, but in budgets, we have to look at it that way.
But in budget, you've got to make the assumption that they will, that anybody will. And so it will be better, but it's the unhealthiest situation that we have in this budget. Public safety is, is okay. CDIT is good. The general fund is, is better than it's been the last couple, three years. Those income tax rates, or income tax revenues coming in up for next year is a very positive situation, but that will not be the case next year because that is a year behind. That's how the state flips their budget. It's on everybody's back for the year. So that will go down. I think we've got, I think we're in a decent position where we can withstand that as long as the recovery continues as it happens.
Well, I don't think any of us, if we didn't think that we could stand that, a lot of this that we've just talked about would not be happening.
I wouldn't propose it if I didn't think.
No, we would not be doing some of these other things that are all good things to do, but if we didn't think we could stand it, we, because the last thing I want to do is have to take something back in two years down the road and say, well, guess what? We can't do that any longer. That's not, that's not how people should be treated, so.
Yeah, my statement has been all along, is the last thing any of us want to hear is that we want to avoid some drastic significant cuts in the next year, whether that's for people or benefits or anything. We don't want to have to do some dramatic cuts. So the little carving off that we've done here in places and being prudent with, having any larger, or larger raises or something is, is all good. It's something. It's not what any of us would like for it to be, but I certainly don't want to come back and say no.
Shouldn't have done that.
That didn't work. And I don't think any of you want that really.
We'll get down to cutting, cutting jobs.
I don't want to do that.
Well, we've, we've never played the games here like some counties do. It's like, oh, we may have to cut, we may have to cut people or something. We never even mention that. You know, we go along, we do our, our work and, you know, we, I wish those people that, that want to criticize us for having too much of a surplus were here, you know, when we're now eating into the, to that surplus in order to pay for highway. I wish they would come and speak up because those, you know, they want to come and criticize that, oh, why are you, why do you have all the savings? Well, this is why we do.
That savings is going to be really, really important for next year, for the 22 budget.
Questions, comments on, from the council? Do you want to have any other ideas? Do you want to do something else? I mean, this doesn't have to be, I know Roy doesn't really want to change it right at the last minute, but we can change it right up to adoption. He's not favor of that.
I'm not a favor of that.
But it can be, it can be done and we'll do it if we need to. I mean, now's really the time to do it, but if you think of something or, we can change it right up to adoption. The reminder for the audience is, remember, this is not adopted. We'll be voting on this in October 8th or 9th, 8th or something. And then it goes to the DLGF for their final, to become final approval. So nothing is set in stone even today.
No, nothing's set in stone. Yeah, if you have any, anything that you, you all have a copy of the sheet that I used to make this thing. I gave you a copy of it, so if you can look through it. I realize you're all, both of you and myself are going to need your glasses. Get it. But look through it. See something that got missed? We need to know. I'm going, I have plugged a bunch of this into the gateway system at this point. I did not do anything with the salaries or the things that we were talking about because we hadn't settled any of that. Then you have a copy of the salary ordinance and the thing. The reason that I gave you a draft copy of the salary ordinance is really for the last page of it. We had made a change to that, what was written in there at this point. I really wanted you to take a look at that. If you are all right with it. It does say a raise for the commissioners and council because I wrote it as the sheet was built at the time. That's been, since our decision's taken out, so.
So it'd be number 15, just to strike number 15?
I've struck in number 15 in the version on the computer already. And that's what I got. That's where we're standing at this point. The only one of these numbers now on your sheet on this next page as far as the reserve column, so the third and second from the right, the only one that's changed now is commissioner, or the, the general fund and that's by, by $150 times 4 and $300 times 3. So that's the only number that's changed. That's what we just talked about. Everything else is in there. So you can see the funds and the reserve that's there. The reserve is at this point projected to be about 34.6% of the total county budget. So you can see the funds and the reserve is there. Uh, the reserve is at this point projected to be about thirty-four point six percent of the total county budget. And the total county budget looks at this point to be minus that amount, sixteen point three nine four million dollars. That's what the RDC tip districts and everything in. Fifteen point nine without.
Okay.
That's what I got. Always down.
All good with that?
We've wiggled those numbers back and forth for many months now. I mean, it is what it is. And I'd say we've done pretty good to get this for.
Well, we don't thank Roy for all the work he's done and all that. I guess the only piece of the puzzle we don't have completely, and we never have it, is the health insurance. I mean, so what, what number did you end up, what?
Five percent.
So there's five percent in there, so.
Five percent and that covers, uh, obviously the general fund, highway, probation, parking wreck, that's it.
Did we use, what, did we use five last year?
Uh, we're ahead right now. We're ahead of them. Now, of course, when you're self-insured, that's a bit of a, you know, a bit of a, uh, moving target that you're aiming for, right? It's.
When the claims come in late in the year.
Then the claims come in late in the year, you, you, you know, the bigger part of the spending is in the back, in the back part of the year, so. It's hard to really tell, but at this point, we're ahead, which I'd like to stay at that point as much as we can because we may need that next year or something. You, you know, each time you talk about, uh, five percent in just the general fund. And this is, I mean, this is an important point when you get to talking about this insurance business here. You know, you're talking about. A hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
For a five percent raise?
Yeah. Hundred and thirty thousand dollars every.
That's what it costs the general fund.
That's just the general fund's portion of it. Um, you know, so that's every year if you go five percent.
But the last few years, we've been fortunate. I mean, I think the self-insurance has helped and. We haven't hit that five percent, but.
Man, comment?
Sure.
Um, October, the October nineteenth commissioners meeting, APEX should be there to give us a quote for the insurance. So they're coming to the October nineteenth commissioners meeting.
Well, that's good. We'll have already adopted our budget then, but you know, that's why we'll have the five, we've got the five percent. Well, the, yeah, the commissioners are very well aware that we won't accept anything above five percent, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a secret to them. They know it, so.
If it comes in at six or seven, they'll have to deal with it.
They have to deal with it. That's a much.
We can't stand six or seven.
Well, no, I mean, that's why they'll have to deal with it. I mean, it's not that we're being contrary, but it's just that you can't do that, you can't do that.
Just remember something, and, and all of you have been here longer except Gemini, I've been here at the same time. When's the last time you saw, there's not been too many times you've seen a four point two percent growth quotient.
Oh, shock.
Okay, four point two percent growth quotient's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That leaves you sixty after you take out the health insurance for an increase, right? Now luckily this year we have an increase in the income tax. This is the largest increase in income taxes that I can remember since I've been on the council. I mapped it out. It's about three hundred and twenty million dollars in taxable income across this county. When we adjusted the levy freeze rate a few years ago. That mapped out at about two hundred and seventy. That's a fifty million dollar increase in a couple of years in taxable income, all right? That's not normal, right? But still with that, that was a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in shares. Get burned that one up here, five percent insurance. So. Well, the reason that we cap this at five percent and stuff is to control it, right? You have to control it somehow. It is be, it is the largest line item in this budget.
What is the total, what is, just for the general, what's the health insurance?
Uh. Sorry. Two million, seven hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Two point seven million.
Two point seven million dollars. What did I just tell you the budget was? Sixteen?
Almost seventy, sixteen five.
That's it. It's the biggest number in here. It's the biggest number in the highway department.
And it's the one we have least control over, until we, until we just take control, but that's just.
So it's, it's important that, I mean, that's, that's what you're up against. That's what you're up against when you start this thing out at. Already knowing that you're capping at five percent. I mean, since I've, since I've been here, we haven't seen as big of increases, right? I mean, I think everybody knows that, but. There were ten, twelve, you talked about.
Oh, yeah, we get hit with these huge increases and there is.
You know, you're talking.
And you were powerless to do anything about it because there weren't that many companies out there that were looking to insure you to begin with. It wasn't like, well, fine, I'll take my business and go elsewhere. It was like. Yeah, where are you going to go? And, um.
And now that, you know, I told you two point seven in the general fund, it's six hundred and eighty-six thousand in highway. So that's on top of that, the county highway department, and then there's small dab in probation and, and parking wreck.
How did we get to four two? Because I think three fives is as high as I've ever seen.
How did you get there? Well, I, I can't dream to, to be able to understand their calculation, but it's all on non-farm incomes and various things like that.
The three fives is as high as I've ever seen us.
Which was last year.
Yeah, and then that was, we were probably got that much.
Tells you how good the economy was prior to the COVID nineteen hitting.
They're running a year behind.
They're running a year behind.
The incomes, when you talk about the county's incomes going up, you know, fifty million dollars over a few years taxable income. Now that's business and individual and everything, okay? It's all. It's, it, it's a rough number, okay? You have some baseline to work with here, but that's, that also shows up in the growth quotient. Because that ends up being a statewide number, so the, the economy was.
It's doing good.
Very good.
We got a five max.
It's a legal limit. We've got probably another year of that going up before that one turns for a while too because of this. And it's a, it severely lumps.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, we'll see you all, uh, in October then. So.
We'll need a motion to adjourn.
I guess.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.